For the Napier City Proposed District Plan, hearing of submissions. Hearing stream three covers quite a variety of zones and hence issues. So I won't read them all out, but we will have, to start the hearing, we will have a summary statement from each of the reporting officers for the topics. And I presume sort of in the order that they are on the schedule. Okay, cool. This morning's or today's hearing is really confined to the morning. We have three submissions following the officers' presentations from the Ahuriri Estuary Protection Society, so welcome to them. We have their presentation in front of us too. Following morning tea, we will have the city's events manager talk to their presentation, their submission, and before lunch, we will have planner for the Ahuriri Regional Park Joint Committee. And tomorrow is a full day. I won't go over all that, but we will have quite a full day of submissions to hear there. The panel for today is comprising myself as the chair, Robert Schofield. To my left, I have Commissioner Rob Van Voorthuisen, and to my right, Commissioner Brosnan, who will be hearing the submissions today and tomorrow. We do have a number of potential conflicts to manage. So today, Commissioner Brosnan will recuse herself from hearing submissions on the Ahuriri Estuary zoning because of her role as chair of the committee currently. Tomorrow, I will recuse myself from transpower, hearing any submissions and deliberating on any matters relating to transpower submissions on the national grid. And also Commissioner Van Voorthuisen will recuse himself from hearing Mr Guy Pankhurst, who he knows personally. So that's how we will manage those conflicts for this particular hearing stream. Apart from that, I think we're all good. We all know the safety, health and safety routines, having been here many times before. So just follow the staff's instructions if an event does happen. So thank you. Without any other matters to raise, I think we will start fairly promptly and get the show on the road. So Ms Sargent, would you like to talk to your particular topics?
Morena, this morning I will be speaking to the boat harbour zone with my colleague Brooke Hemmings on the marine industrial zone. I'll speak first and then I'll let her introduce herself and then continue myself. My name is Jerial Sargent. I'm employed as a policy analyst within Napier City Council's city development team. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Business Studies and a Master of Public Policy. I have two years' experience working in resource management policy in local government, and I have been involved in the review of the PDP since 2022. I have prepared the Section 42a report with Ms Hemmings, but I was not involved in the drafting of the Boat Harbour Zone chapter or the Section 32 report.
Morena, my name is Brooke Hemmings, and I am the author of the Marine Industrial Zone, as well as the Boat Harbour Zone with Ms Sargent. I am employed as a graduate policy planner within Napier City Council's city development team, and my qualifications include a Bachelor of Social Science and Political Science Education and Public Policy. I have been involved in the proposed district plan since January of 2024, and while I've prepared the Section 42 report for the matters relating to the marine industrial zone, I was not involved in drafting the proposed district plan chapter or the Section 32 report.
An overview of the topics. The marine industrial zone historically provided for marine industrial activities, such as boat manufacturing and servicing that were dependent on the proximity to the coastal environment. However, this zone no longer reflects current land use in Napier as these activities now occur inland. The Boat Harbour Zone is a new and a specialised zone that supports marine-related recreational, community and tourism activities while balancing coastal management objectives. The report addresses the proposed deletion of the marine industrial zone and the associated refinement of the Boat Harbour Zone provisions to better align with the NZC PS and the evolving use of Napier's waterfront. The matters raised in submission. A total of twelve primary submissions and three further submission points were received across the marine industrial zone and the Boat Harbour Zone chapters. The key themes include the deletion of the marine industrial zone. Napier City Council proposed the removal of this zone, citing that its purpose was no longer relevant with activities shifting inland. The Boat Harbour Zone provisions that submitters sought changes to the Boat Harbour Zone, including the modifications to permitted activities, building height limits and standards to align with the zone's coastal character. Emergency management. Fire and emergency New Zealand requested explicit standards for water supply to ensure adequate firefighting resources for new developments. Airport and bird strike risks. Submissions highlighted the need to manage potential bird strike risks from activities within the Boat Harbour Zone, given its proximity to the Hawke's Bay Airport. And finally, the fence and fence height and reserve management plans. Submitters raised concerns about outdoor storage, fence heights, while others sought better alignment with reserve management plans and conservation activities. At the time of releasing this opening statement, there weren't any, there wasn't any expert evidence supplied. But there was, and there was no matters raised by the panel. There was a couple, there was one question to the Boat Harbour Zone that was answered. It was just a matter of correction. And so the key matters in contention was the rezoning of the marine industrial zone to the Boat Harbour Zone. The appropriateness of removing the marine industrial zone and integrating its provision into the Boat Harbour Zone was a significant point of discussion. This shift reflects the changes in land use and alliance with the Reserves Act and the NZC PS objectives. The permitted activities and building heights in the Boat Harbour Zone. Maintaining the coastal character of the zone while providing for compatible uses remains a core issue. Recommendations include retaining the current 7.5 metre building height limit to reflect the zone's coastal character. Emergency management. Explicit reference to the Napier City Council Engineering Code of Practice has been recommended to address concerns raised by FENS regarding water supply standards. And bird strike risks. Rather than introducing restrictive rules, amendments to the assessment criteria are proposed to ensure potential risks are considered where it's appropriate. Amendments addressing these issues are detailed in appendices A and B. And thank you. We are happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that. Just a couple of questions for me and then I'll turn to the panel. The rezoning from marine industrial to Boat Harbour, is that really in contention? Is anyone opposing that as such, or is it?
No, no one's opposing that.
No, okay, so good. And the other question was the statement submitted from the FENS planner. Was there any response to that in regard to your recommendations?
That was a, that's a matter that's been raised across multiple chapters as well, so we haven't formulated one specific to this. But we're in the, we're keen to hear their response and then respond consistently across the multiple chapters as well.
Right. Is there a point in the hearing we should sort of address specifically the FENS submission, I think? An appropriate point?
I wasn't aware of a point in the hearing today.
No? Okay, well, may I raise it for you?
Yeah.
Questions from the panel?
Yeah, thank.
Won't.
It won't move. Maybe we'll work on getting the microphone closer in the break. Yeah, I had a similar question just around whether or not our code of practice for, in regards to the FENS submission actually covers off the points that they've raised and they submitted, sort of set for inclusion. So we, just clarifying, so we haven't heard back on that point yet.
Yeah, so we have, we had received their pre-hearing evidence. We haven't formulated a response yet, as we consider, they raise a good point. But we haven't just crafted how we might be able to match the gaps that they've identified without being inconsistent in the approach that we take across the chapter. Yeah.
Cool. I think that's a good point you raised around at what point we'll be able to address.
So if you could maybe, tomorrow's some point we'll discuss.
I do have the open space zones as well where they submitted again, so I can address it then.
Thank you very much. No further questions on that topic?
Since I've already introduced myself, do you mind if I just head into my topics? Cool. So firstly, the multi-purpose zone. Again, I was involved. I prepared the Section 42a report for matters relating to this zone. However, was not involved in the proposed district plan chapter or the Section 32 report. I'm happy to take questions at the end of my statement. The multi-purpose zone recognises the importance of marae and finua associated with historic use for health, economic and cultural wellbeing of Maori. This zone provides for the unique characteristics of spaces and buildings that are located in marae settings and enabling mana finua to use land to undertake customary practices. Marae provide a range of social, commercial and cultural activities, including meetings, celebrations, tangi hanga, educational workshops and other relevant events. While there are no hapu-based marae within Napier's jurisdictional boundaries, there are a handful of urban marae and education-focused facilities that align with the description of the activities anticipated within the multi-purpose zone. The traditional canoe landing place is included as the only landing place allocated in Napier for canoes after the 1851 Ahuriri land purchase. The inclusion of this recognises the cultural activities and traditional use associated with whaka. There were six primary submissions and eight further submission points received regarding the multi-purpose zone chapter. The themes included fence heights. Submitters raised concerns about the safety and necessity of fence height restrictions, proposing their removal or adjustment. The activities within the multi-purpose zone. Submitters sought broader definition, sorry, broader definitions for the multi-purpose zone to include a wide range of social and economic uses alongside a logical cascade of consenting process. Emergency management again came up in this one here. Requests were made to address the water supply standards for the firefighting and new developments, and there was a few out-of-scope requests. Concerns about natural hazards and the suitability of some proposed areas were raised, although these issues are addressed under other district plan chapters. There has been pre-circulated evidence and statements that were received from a number of submitters, and I've read this evidence and I'm prepared to respond to any questions. However, I do, I believe in some cases there is scope to make some changes. However, I do wish to hear from the submitters before providing a response. The panel did raise some questions in advance of this hearing, and these have been taken into consideration and have been answered separately. The key matters in contention to the multi-purpose zone chapter. The primary matters in contention revolve around expanding the definition and scope of activities enabled within the multi-purpose zone to better reflect tanga to finua aspirations. Balancing flexibility and land use with appropriate management of adverse effects. Addressing natural hazard risks in areas proposed for inclusion within the zone. And the request from FENS to add a new standard which ensures sufficient water supply is available for firefighting services. The recommended amendments are outlined in appendix A of this report, providing a clear pathway for consenting and aligning the provisions with higher order planning documents and tanga to finua needs. Thank you. Any questions for that one?
Okay, thank you very much. I have no questions. Any questions?
The next zone I have is a tertiary education zone. Again, I prepared the Section 42a report for matters relating to the tertiary education zone, but I was not involved in drafting the proposed district plan chapter or the Section 32 report. The tertiary education chapter provides for the operation and development of tertiary education facilities and associated activities. Napier's tertiary education facilities at Eastern Institute of Technology contribute to the overall community and economic wellbeing of the city. Connectivity of the campus with residential areas for students and staff and industrial and commercial areas for workplace learning and amenities will improve the quality of the learning environment. Further, the layout of the tertiary education zone contributes to Napier's attractiveness, safety, health and economic and social wellbeing. There were three submitters received regarding the tertiary education chapter, and these were about fence heights and emergency management. There has been some pre-circulated evidence from this topic, and again, I have read this evidence and prepared to respond. However, would like to hear from the submitters before providing a proper response. The panel raised questions in advance of this hearing, and this has been taken into consideration and answered separately. And the only matter of contention within this chapter was the request from FENS to add a new standard which ensures sufficient water supply is available for firefighting services. Thank you.
No questions from the panel?
And then lastly from me, the wastewater treatment zone. Again, I have prepared the Section 42a report for matters relating to the wastewater treatment topic. However, I was not involved in drafting the proposed district plan chapter or the Section 32 report. The wastewater treatment zone identifies an area of land associated with the treatment of the city's wastewater at Awutotor. It provides for specific activities that are required for the city's wastewater. One purpose of local government is to promote social, economic, environmental and cultural wellbeing of communities in the present and for the future, and as part of this, Napier City Council needs to ensure its wastewater networks retain adequate future capacity. There were three submissions regarding the wastewater treatment zone, and these were about fence heights, natural hazards and emergency management definitions. The pre-circulated evidence statements received on this topic. I have read these and am prepared to respond to any questions or matters raised. However, I wish to hear from submitters before providing a response. The panel raised questions in advance of this hearing, and I have taken these into consideration, and this has been answered separately. The only matter of contention within this zone again is the request from FENS to add a new standard which ensures sufficient water supply and is available for firefighting services. Thank you.
Just a quick question. The question of natural hazards, given the location that some of this raised it. You're recommending rejecting this submission from that point. Is the matter of natural hazards in this particular location likely to be raised again as part of variation of the natural hazards?
I would say it would be raised within that variation.
Right. And would Mr Umsby's submission be a relevant one to consider at that point? Or is it, is it fairly confined to this zoning?
I would say it is confined to the zoning, but however, I am happy to consider that and maybe take that forward to the variation if there's something.
Any questions? Stadium zone.
Yep, Kiala Kato. My name's Michelle Gregg, and my statement relates to the stadium zone chapter. I'm employed as a senior policy analyst in Napier City Council's city development team, and my qualifications include a Master of Social Science and Geography and Demography. I've got 20 years' experience working as a policy advisor in central and local government, and I've been involved in the proposed district plan since July 2024. Whilst I prepared the Section 42a report for the matters relating to the stadium zone, I was not involved in preparing the proposed plan. I've read all of the submitter evidence and statements in relation to the stadium zone chapter and am ready to respond to any queries about these from the panel. So just an overview of the stadium zone topic. In the context of Napier's proposed district plan, the stadium zone applies to Maclean Park. The purpose of the stadium zone chapter is to provide for the operation and development of large-scale multi-use sport, recreation and community facilities, buildings and structures with capacity to host local, regional, national and international events, providing entertainment to residents and visitors. Also noted in the chapter's introduction, the zone provides for the ongoing use of Maclean Park for its intended activities while also seeking to minimise impacts on the surrounding residential neighbourhood. The chapter therefore seeks to achieve a balance between enabling use of the park to contribute to the city's community and economic wellbeing and maintaining a reasonable living environment for nearby neighbours. This includes consideration of noise and light levels, height, bulk and location of buildings, as well as hours and days of operation. These issues have informed the recommendations in my Section 42a report. Six submissions were received on the proposed stadium zone chapter, raising 37 submission points. This includes submissions made on the definitions chapter. Two further submissions, raising 15 further submission points, were also received, although I note that seven of these were duplicates from the same submitter, Napier City Council's events manager. The issues raised in the submissions are presented in my Section 42a report and cover the following themes. Firstly, the legislative framework. Secondly, stadium zone activity provisions, including building activity, community facility and recreational activities, entertainment activities and provisions covering temporary seating, fencing and vehicle parking. Thirdly, stormwater drainage and reserve maintenance provision. And lastly, fire safety. I will summarise some of these key matters now. Submissions were received on a number of matters relating to various activities within the zone. I'm recommending amendments to clarify the terminology and scope of activities. The purpose of this is to more adequately reflect the range of activities hosted at Maclean Park, including sporting and non-sporting events, and also the stated intent of Napier City Council's events manager that the council is seeking to broaden use of the Maclean Park facility. My recommendations apply in particular to recreational activities in stadium zone rule three and event centre activities. This latter term I'm recommending instead of the proposed community facilities term in stadium zone rule nine. I've recommended that stadium zone rule six, commercial activities, is removed from the chapter and that commercial activities are included as ancillary to other activities as a permitted activity, so that these are not required to follow a consenting pathway in order to operate. I've also recommended removal of stadium zone rule 10, residential activities, and rule 11, industrial activities, as I agree with submitters, that these activities are unlikely to be conducted within the zone. Should any proposed industrial or residential activities arise in the future, stadium zone rule 12, activities not otherwise provided for, provides a sufficient consenting pathway. So moving now to my report's recommendations relating to proposed entertainment activities within the zone. Multiple submission points were received about the confusion between provisions for what are essentially temporary noise events at Maclean Park across three chapters in the proposed plan, these being the stadium zone, temporary activities and the noise chapters. My report recommendations aim to rectify this, and my assessment acknowledges the interrelationship between the number of events, noise limits, event duration and event days. My recommendations take into consideration expert noise advice from the Stiles Group, the intent of the stadium zone and discussions held in the pre-hearing meeting between the relevant parties. I've made these recommendations with a view to clarifying provisions within the chapter for what I am recommending a termed temporary noise events in stadium zone rule four. The number of these events remains unchanged from the proposed plan. My recommendations aim to balance the need to manage noisy events at the park so as to not impact to a greater extent on the quality of life of surrounding residents with the need to enable permitted activities that support the vibrancy of the city. My report notes that the opportunity remains for event managers to apply for consent should any event not meet the activity provisions. A pre-hearing meeting was held with Mr Cameron Drury on behalf of Napier City Council's event manager, Ms Amelia Longley and Ms Tanya Dyack from Napier City Council's open spaces team, and officers responsible for evaluating submissions relating to the temporary activities chapter, Ms Sargent, and the noise chapter, Ms Mills. The purpose of the pre-hearing meeting was to discuss submissions relating to discrepancies in provisions between the three key chapters mentioned earlier. No other correspondence or pre-hearing meetings with submitters were held in relation to submissions on this chapter. Pre-circulated evidence relating to the stadium zone chapter was received from one party, Mr Cameron Drury, on behalf of Napier City Council's event manager, which I have read and will briefly comment on now. Mr Drury's statement outlines general support of my Section 42a report recommendations to consolidate stadium-related activities originally proposed in the temporary activities chapter by covering them all within the stadium zone chapter. Mr Drury's evidence, however, does not support a perceived reduction in the number of events able to be accommodated in Maclean Park as a permitted activity, quoted as reducing from 16 to six and discussed in paragraph 102 of my Section 42a report. Mr Drury also notes that recreational activities and event centre activities may be restricted as the plan proposes they comply with the noise limits provided for in noise R1. Mr Drury provides an example that some sporting fixtures, such as international cricket matches, may need to avail themselves of higher noise limits than is currently provided for in the noise chapter. The noise chapter is being heard as part of hearing stream four in May, and there may be an opportunity to consider this issue then. As mentioned earlier, I'm recommending that the number of temporary noise events does not change from what was proposed in the planned stadium zone chapter and that these be renamed from entertainment activities. Instead, I'm recommending that certain other provisions, the inclusion of Friday evenings, extended finishing times and a noise limit of 85 decibels become more permissive compared to what was originally proposed and is requested by submitters. Given the proposed amendments are consistent with the stadium zone chapter's policy framework and the number of temporary noise events as proposed remains unchanged in that chapter, a Section 32aa evaluation is not required. The intent of the recommendations in my Section 42a report remains, which is to strike a balance between appropriately enabling events within the zone and providing for a reasonable living environment for the adjacent neighbours. I look forward to hearing further from the submitter today. The panel raised some questions in relation to my Section 42a report, and I have responded to these in a separate document and provided these to the panel in advance of the hearing. Based on the matters raised in submissions and subsequent pre-circulated submitter evidence, the primary matter of contention is the number of temporary noise events proposed for the stadium zone as a permitted activity. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions for me. The relationship between stadium zone and those two other zones, the noise and the temporary activities one. Do you think with your recommended changes, you've got that correct in terms of the consistency? Because it looks like the stadium zone is meant to be sort of self-contained for noise and temporary activities, but it's not fully contained. There's some leakages to those other chapters. Do you think there's any other room for improvement? I was just looking at the recommending a note that temporary activities chapter doesn't apply to this. Do you think something similar should be carried in the introduction to the temporary activities chapter?
That would certainly help. I understand deliberations on the temporary activities chapter are happening this afternoon. What we've tried to do is bring anything related to the stadium zone as much as possible into that chapter with the understanding that some noise limits are still sitting in the noise chapter for some activities. Yeah.
I was going to ask you that. So can you just clarify for me what activities are not intended to be covered by the stadium zone in terms of noise?
So the noise levels for recreational activities and, I'll just get the correct term, as proposed. Sorry, event centre activities and recreational activities, which are essentially sporting events in the terms of recreational activities. Those noise levels are covered in the noise chapter.
And can I ask what the logic for doing that is?
I'm unaware of the logic at this point, as I wasn't involved in the preparation of the Section 32 report. I'm not able to comment.
I mean, I can understand it from one perspective, because those sorts of activities would occur across the city in many places. But on the other hand, we have a zoning that's meant to be fairly self-contained. But on the other hand, we have a zoning that's meant to be very self-contained.
That's correct.
So I was just looking to see whether there are possibilities for further containment.
Yes, I agree there would be in terms of taking the Stadium Zone noise levels for those two activities and bringing them into this chapter, so it is fully self-contained. There's an opportunity there.
Subject to questions from the panel, may I ask if you could further consider those sort of scope improvement? Questions as part of your response?
Yes, I can do that.
Questions from the panel?
Yeah, good morning. It seems to me we have two views being put to us from within Napier City itself. We have the Napier City Planning Department saying there should be six temporary noise events, and we have the Napier City Events Management Department saying there should be sixteen. I'm struggling to understand the reason for the different views within the council on that. Can you assist?
We had a pre-hearing meeting to try and resolve the differing views on the number of events. The evidence from the Events Manager is resting on the fact that the proposed plan referenced temporary noise events in two chapters, so they're looking for a cumulative addition of the two sets of numbers. The planning view is that we need to take into account the evidence from the noise experts that was received prior to the plan being drafted, excuse me, and that we also need to take into account one of the intents of the chapter, which is to be a good neighbour essentially, given that the zone is a hundred per cent surrounded by a residential zone, which is quite unique in terms of stadiums, mini stadiums in New Zealand.
So the Noise Chapter allowed for a larger number of events?
The Temporary Activities Chapter did.
Temporary Activities Chapter did?
Yes, ten.
So that would align with the relief being sought by the Events Manager then?
Yes.
So why is that not being accepted by the Planning Department?
I do note that when the analysis, the Section 42A evaluation was undertaken on the Temporary Activities Chapter, submitter 222.128, so Napier City Council Open Spaces Team, sought relief to reduce the number of temporary noise events in that chapter and to, that were mentioned in that chapter from ten to six, and to move those, align those with what was in the Stadium Zone Chapter of six. So a submission point from that chapter was made in that regard.
Was it Herring Stream Two, was it?
Yes.
And what was the outcome of that?
The recommendation from the report's author was to agree with that request and that the provisions actually be covered in the Stadium Zone Chapter, not the Temporary Activities Zone Chapter.
So now we have three different points of view from within the council, the Events Management Team, the Open Spaces Team and the Planning Team.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll need to resolve that.
Although I will comment that the submission put in by the Open Spaces Team largely aligns with the view of the Planning Team.
What was the historical situation prior to the proposed plan being notified? How many temporary noise events were allowed under the operative plan?
I'll just have to get my notes on that. Under the operative plan essentially sporting events were unlimited with a maximum noise volume of ninety decibels.
There was no limit?
On sporting events, so that remains, but with a lower noise limit.
Yep.
As proposed. Also, so there was no Stadium Zone Chapter. These were covered under Temporary Events. The operative plan also allowed for up to five concerts or other activities, things like circuses, parades, et cetera, on any one site per year at ninety decibels, apart from the foreshore in Anderson Park areas where they were allowed up to eighteen per year per site.
How many was that, sorry?
Eighteen. And that kind of, I understand, Ms Sajan, that remains the same as per the Temporary Activities Chapter, they're covered in the Temporary Activities Chapter.
Okay.
So they're separate, but up to five concerts.
So in terms of McLean Park and the operative plan, there was no limit on sporting events and five concerts?
That's my understanding, yes.
And your recommendation is now for McLean Park to have six, no?
Unlimited sporting.
Yeah.
And up to six temporary noise events.
All right, thanks.
I had a similar set of questions, but they've been teased out.
Okay, thank you very much.
That's me, thank you. Morning everyone, my name is Lily Lawson and I am employed as an Associate Planner at Barker &amp; Associates and as a Consultant Planner at Napier City Council and the Reporting Officer for the Te Fanganui Aroto Ecology and Stormwater Treatment Zone Chapter of the PDP. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Urban Planning with Honours.
Lily, just a minute. Are you having trouble hearing?
Yeah, the whole time, but we're particularly interested in this.
Sure, sorry.
It's loud bad there, so it's sort of cuts the noise.
Well, if you do want to particularly hear this topic, please come up to the submission, the submitter table there, so you can hear properly.
I have over eight years' experience working as a Resource Management Planner, including various resource management positions in local government, levy organisations and private consultancy. I was not involved in the drafting of the Zone Chapter, prepared the Section 42A report for the matters relating to the chapter provisions. I would be happy to take any questions you may have at the end of my statement. The Zone's purpose is to provide for stormwater retention, detention and treatment while protecting ecological values, habitat restoration and enhancement of cultural values. A master planning process is currently underway. Thirteen submitters raised over seventy submission and fifty further submission points in relation to the Te Fanganui Aroto Ecology and Stormwater Treatment Zone. The submissions raised points in relation to most aspects of the chapter, as well as some definitions. Due to the specific nature of the relief sought by Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, their submissions were addressed under a separate heading in the Section 42A report. I will expand on the key themes of submissions and my recommendations and comment generally on whether the matter has been pursued in evidence. At the time of publishing my opening statement, evidence had been received by the following parties, Ahuriri Regional Joint Park Committee, Hawke's Bay Airport Limited. In addition to the evidence received, the Department of Conservation have submitted a letter of support of the proposed changes. In particular, they considered that the ecosystems and Indigenous Biodiversity District Plan variation with their submission will assist to protect the values of the zone. Since publishing the opening statement, I am aware that a presentation has been received by the Ahuriri Estuary Protection Society and a statement of submission from Hawke's Bay Regional Council. Submissions sought changes to Objective One and Two. The changes recommended to be accepted provided greater consistency in language and correct reference to stormwater retention and detention. The Ahuriri Regional Joint Park Committee has pursued the inclusion of educational in Objective Five. Changes were sought to Policies One to Three, Policy Seven and Policy Eight. Changes were recommended to Policy One to ensure consistent language in relation to the purpose of the zone. The recommended changes to adopt an effects-based approach on the basis that it may not be possible to avoid adverse effects for all sub-matters in all cases. The Ahuriri Regional Joint Park Committee has pursued changes to P Six to reference educational and industrial activities and the consequential deletion of Policy Seven. I note that Ms Rayburn has also indicated that Policy Seven could be amended as an alternative to deletion, to change the Avoid Policy Directive, which she considers unsuitable given the non-complying, rather than prohibited, activity status for residential industrial activities as recommended in the Section 42A report. I will consider both the deletion and the option of revised language further throughout the hearing. The Hawke's Bay Regional Council through evidence has pursued the changes to Policy Two to promote nature-based solutions. Based on submissions, recommended changes have been made to Rules Three, Four, Ten and Eleven. Those changes to Rules Three and Four were minor in nature and provided consistency and clarity. The changes also recommended the deletion of Rule Eleven with the effect of activities otherwise not provided for being captured under Rule Ten. The activity status for Rule Ten is recommended to be changed from discretionary to non-complying, which is considered to be more efficient and effective at achieving the objective and policy framework, which set clear direction for the purpose of the zone and the activities anticipated. The Regional Park Committee continue to seek that educational facilities and small-scale industrial activities are provided for where appropriate and have recommended changes to Rule Four and R Six, and that's just a correction at that paragraph of incorrectly said, R Five and R Nine. These changes are considered by them to accommodate the changes they seek to Objective Five and Policy Six outlined earlier. Changes were recommended to Standard Three in response to Hawke's Bay Airport Limited's submission seeking that vegetation as well as buildings and structures comply with airport height control designation of four point five metres, whichever is lesser. I also recommended the deletion of Standard Nine on the basis that it was unnecessary duplication of regional plan requirements. The Regional Park Joint Committee continue to seek changes to Standard Eight Building Coverage and have provided evidence on this matter. The Regional Park Committee also supports separating passive recreation and passive recreational facilities and consequential amendments to the provisions to reflect this. The proposed wording put forward by Ms Rayburn has been included in Attachment A, which was my response to panel's questions. At paragraph twenty-one, I outline the Ahuriri Regional Joint Park Committee's position to submissions made by other parties. This position generally aligns with recommendations made in response to these submissions in my Section 42A report. The exception to this is their support of the deletion of P Seven, which I spoke earlier on. The evidence of the committee also recognises that the development of the regional park should not compromise the safe operation of neighbouring Hawke's Bay Airport. They support my recommendations in relation to adding vegetation to Standard Three and are open to considering addressing the issue raised through submissions by Hawke's Bay Airport in relation to bird strike. Ms Robotham discusses in detail the matter of managing wildlife to avoid compromising the safety and operation of the airport. In particular, she discusses managing the effects and risks of bird strike. At paragraph eight point four, she has suggested a new standard. Ms Robotham also suggests splitting Rule One and Two to address plant maintenance and pest and noxious plant control separate to planting habitat restoration and conservation activities, as well as changes to the assessment criteria. In relation to the pre-hearing meeting I indicated was taking place with Ms Robotham, this is scheduled for this afternoon and an update will be provided to the panel at tomorrow's hearing. The standards sought by Hawke's Bay Airport, the Te Fanganui Aroto Zone in relation to bird strike will be discussed with those more substantive changes in relation to this issue in the Network Utilities Chapter. The panel raised one question in relation to the recommendation report, and this has been addressed in Attachment A of my opening statement. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Just, so, point of clarification, is there a large measure of agreement between yourself now and the airport evidence in terms of what changes should be made? And if not, where's the outstanding matter of contention at the moment?
So the airport, the meeting with the airport hasn't taken place, but the changes sought to the Te Fanganui Aroto Zone relate to a standard for bird strike, but this is in the context of more substantive changes that they've sought to the Network Utilities Chapter, so we're discussing them as a whole and can provide an update tomorrow.
So that's the only really outstanding matter at the moment?
Yes, other than those, oh yeah, and I guess the other outstanding matter from the Regional Joint Park Committee is the Building Coverage Standard.
Commissioner Van Veldhuisen, have any questions? Okay, thank you very much, we'll wait to hear tomorrow, if you may, thank you. Next is the Airport Zone, so.
Hello, can you hear me?
Can't see you though. Turning back, I don't know if the screen here could be, come back on.
Actually unsure, I'm sorry, but for some reason my video is not working, which isn't ideal. Oh, hold on. Yeah, I can't get it to work today.
That's all right, we can hear you, that's the main thing.
Okay.
Box on.
Okay, thank you. Apologies for that. So morning all, I will be speaking to both the Airport Zone and Airport Zone today. My name is Pip Beechin, I am employed as a Senior Planner Planner at Strategy Planning. My qualifications include a Bachelor of Science from the University of Canterbury and a Master of Urban Planning from the University of Auckland. I have over eight years' experience working as a Resource Management Planner, with this work including various resource management positions for private companies as well as in local government. I was not involved in the drafting of the Airport Zone Chapter. Sorry, just, I'm talking about the Airport Zone, starting with the Airport Zone.
That's all right, thank you.
I was not involved with the drafting of this chapter within the PDP, however, I prepared the Section 42A report for this chapter. There were one hundred and thirty submission points and sixty-nine further submission points, further submissions received in relation to the Airport Zone. My Section 42A report is divided into the key issues raised in the submissions, which include chapter formatting, landscape and amenity issues, estuary, biodiversity and stormwater, activities, infrastructure and other matters. Changes were sought by submitters across the chapter. I've made a number of recommendations to amend provisions of this chapter in my Section 42A report. The key changes including a number of changes relating to clarification and formatting improvements, amendments to the extent of the view shaft control areas, deferring relevant biodiversity matters to be assessed in the eco-variation, to delete the definition of airport-related activities and consequential amendments to the wording of Rule One and Objective Four, as well as delete Policy One and Policy Two and replace with a new policy for all airport activities, adding a new standard, Standard Eight for servicing, and amend the planning maps to include the extent of the airport business precinct. No pre-hearing meetings with submitters were held in relation to the submissions on this chapter. Pre-circulated submitter evidence and statements have been received from Fire and Emergency in New Zealand, Hawke's Bay Regional Council and Hawke's Bay Airport Limited. Fans have indicated that they are not satisfied with the recommendation made in response to their relief sought. They had requested a new performance standard in relation to firefighting water supply and the consistent response across the plan chapters was to include an additional statement within the introduction of the chapter to refer plan users to the Engineering Code of Practice where consideration of firefighting water supply and storage is required. Given the breadth of this relief sought and concern across multiple chapters of the plan, I will provide a response to this matter within my office's reply to ensure consistency across all chapters. With respect to Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, With respect to Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, corporate planning and landscape statements of evidence were received as well as legal submissions. I have reviewed each of these. The planning evidence includes a number of requested amendments to... Excuse me. The planning evidence includes a number of requested amendments to the chapter which are either repeated from the original submission or new amendments in response to the Section Forty-Two-A report. There are a number of minor and consequential requests made, which I agree with in principle as they improve the consistency and clarity of the chapter for plan users. I will incorporate these within my officer's reply report. There are a number of matters of contention which relate to the management of landscape and amenity effects in the airport zone as it relates to the proposed landscape sensitive control areas and view shafts, provision for activities within the airport zone and management of activities within the zone. I believe in some cases there is scope to make changes to address the concerns raised by the airport, which I will highlight below. Additionally, there are cases which relate to more substantial matters where I wish to hear from the submitters before providing a response. In relation to the issues of the chapter, the planning evidence submitted has requested a number of minor changes to the wording of the issues of the airport zone. I agree in principle that the proposed wording has merit as it assists with clarity of the chapter. I will confirm the wording that is accepted and recommended within my officer's reply after the hearing. In relation to the landscape sensitive control areas, the planning and landscape evidence requests that these areas are deleted from the airport zone. The evidence suggests that zone standards such as building setbacks and landscape strip requirements could provide a suitable alternative to the landscape sensitive control area one to soften the interface along the zone boundary of this area. Additionally, the planning evidence suggests that Area Two is unnecessary as non-airport activities outside of the airport business precinct require consent as a discretionary activity in any case. The evidence also requests that Objectives Five and Objective Six, which relate to special landscape character values, are deleted and replaced with a new single objective. Further, consequential amendments to Policy Seven and Standard Seven are requested. The concept of landscape sensitive control areas were designed to ensure landscape values could be considered outside of the natural features and landscapes chapter. This approach is necessary because applying the provisions of the NFL within the airport zone would severely limit airport operations. As such, it strikes the balance between recognising the operational needs of the airport while acknowledging the value of the surrounding landscape. The extent of the landscape control areas were informed by technical evidence, and they seek to provide a balanced approach which allows the airport to develop in a manner that aligns with their master plan, however, ensures that visual amenity and landscape effects are appropriately considered. For these reasons, I am yet to be convinced of any change to my recommendations set out in the Section Forty-Two-A report relating to landscape sensitive control areas. I do, however, wish to reserve my final recommendation until the officer's reply report following the hearing. Similar to these areas, the planning and landscape evidence requests that the view shaft control areas are deleted. This is supported by the legal submission provided. Additionally, the planning evidence and legal submission raise an issue of scope in relation to the amended view shafts recommended within the Section Forty-Two-A report. While I do not agree that the view shafts should be deleted, I do agree that the view shafts as notified are compromised and are not the most efficient or effective way of managing landscape effects within the zone. Should there not be scope to amend the view shafts as per the recommendations within the Section Forty-Two-A report, I agree that changes could be made to the notified view shafts to improve their effectiveness. I am happy to work with the submitter following the hearing in an effort to find an agreeable outcome for both parties. With respect to the activities within the airport zone, note that the submitter agrees with the recommendations within the Section Forty-Two-A report to delete the definition and reference of airport-related activities and rely solely on airport activities. I do not agree with the requested change to the definition of airport activity to include the word including within the first sentence. The reasons for this are set out in my Section Forty-Two-A report, however, in summary, it creates uncertainty around the activities covered by this definition, and my preference is to provide clarity to plan users on exactly what types of activities are provided for within the definition. With respect to activities within the airport business precinct, I agree with the submitter in principle that Rules, Rule Four, Rule Five and Rule Six should recognise the need for officers' ancillary to the activities provided for within these rules. I am happy to work with them after the hearing or provide recommended wording within my officer's reply. However, with respect to the activity status of these rules, as well as requested amendments to Policy Three, I will withhold my recommendation until after we have heard from the submitter. The planning evidence indicates that the submitter is generally supportive of the introduction of a new non-compliant activity status for heavy industrial activities, however, raises that the definition for heavy industry and industrial activity are very similar. I am not recommending any further changes to this recommended standard as there are some industrial activities which may be appropriate and will not compromise the gateway function of the airport. In any case, these will remain to be assessed as a discretionary activity which provides council with the discretion to consider potential effects of the activity at such time that a process consent is submitted. The submitter has requested amended wording of the matters of discretion in relation to whether or not the function and operation of the airport or the airport zone should be considered. I will provide a response to this in my officer's reply following the hearing. Evidence has also indicated that the airport retains their original view to delete Standard Three in relation to boundary. On further consideration of their submission and evidence, I consider that there is merit in this assessment when a holistic view of all standards is undertaken, specifically Standard One height and Standard Four yards. However, I need time to consider the implications of this view and will provide a more fulsome response in my officer's reply. The panel raised a number of questions in relation to the Section Forty-Two-A recommendation report. These have been addressed in a separate document and provided to the panel in advance of the hearing. The key matters of contention that retain in relation to the airport zone are the management of firefighting water supply, the management of landscape and amenity effects in the zone as it relates to the proposed landscape sensitive control areas and view shafts, the activities provided for within the zone and the management of activities within the zone. I am happy to take any questions.
Okay, thank you. Just a quick question about the view shafts. You haven't reached a conclusion whether there is scope to amend the view shafts as per Section Forty-Two-A report recommendations, is that correct?
We have received some advice around that, but we are still establishing... Sorry, we've reached out for some advice around that, but we're still establishing the other scope that we have.
Right. So if that advice were to conclude that there is no scope or the scope is perilous, the changes that you would make, you are suggesting working with the submitter, i.e. the airport, to find an agreeable outcome, so we don't really know what that might look like at the moment, so we would have to wait for your response to the hearing, your reply?
Yeah, I believe that we could, if there isn't scope to amend the view shafts as per what we recommended in the Section Forty-Two-A report, there could be scope to alter the notified view shafts, so say, change their origin points, which could amend, you know, how effective they are. So those were the types of changes that I was suggesting in that comment.
Okay, thank you. And similarly, there's some sort of doubt is there about where the boundaries of the airport business precinct could be, because it's currently missing from the planning maps, and I think there's an agreement that they should be put into the planning maps given their controls around them. Where is the uncertainty involved with where the mapping is?
No, so there isn't uncertainty around where it is, it was just not, it was missed off the map.
Right.
So the comment is that I agree. So their request was that it was put on the planning maps, and I agree that it needs to go there since there's rules that relate to it.
It's just getting accurate enough boundaries for the GIS systems, is the question. Okay, thank you. Any questions from the panel?
Yes. Just Commissioner Van Voorthuisen here, just following up on that last issue. So is the business precinct as indicated in the master plan, the airport's master plan?
I believe so, yes.
And just turning to your Paragraph Twenty-Two in terms of these view shafts, what's your understanding of the purpose of the view shafts?
The purpose of the view shafts are to provide for visual connections between the identified features within the zone. So the expert evidence we received was to retain the intermittent or glimpsed views of those throughout the zone.
Yeah. So my understanding of their purpose, put that in lay terms, is to enable users or people travelling along the state highway to have occasional glimpses of the distant landscape across the airport. Would that be a reasonable summary?
Yes, not necessarily just from the state highway, I think there is importance from within the airport as well.
So would that be passengers inside the terminal building being enabled to look across the runways to the distant landscape?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. That's all, thanks. No, thank you. So just on the matter of landscape sensitive control areas, hopefully you can hear me, is the idea that the consent process would address how to design developments to ensure the landscape values are considered?
The consent process would allow the council, it would give the council discretion to, yeah, determine if development, I guess, was proposed in a way that was sensitive to that landscape.
And could you give me maybe an example or two of how that could be achieved, how developments in those areas could adequately address those landscape values?
I think the key thing is, like, so that there's not like a... It's to soften the development from the boundaries, so there's not like a lot of bulk situated against the boundaries, it's to ensure that there's a, yeah, I guess, a soft interface with the adjacent zones.
Right, through planting or through building design?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you. No further questions at the moment, thank you. So the port zone is next on your brief?
Yep.
Give us a moment, we'll just turn to notes.
Sure, me too. So I'm just gonna have a quick drink of water, two seconds, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so the port zone, there were... I was not involved in the drafting of the chapter, but I prepared the Section Forty-Two-A report for the zone. There were seventy-one submission points and twenty-six further submissions received in relation to the port zone. My Section Forty-Two-A report is divided into the key issues raised in the submissions, which include activities, character and amenity, regional significance, transport and infrastructure, coastal values and biodiversity and other miscellaneous matters. Changes were sought by submitters across the chapter. I have made a number of recommendations to amend provisions of this chapter in my Section Forty-Two-A report, including a number of changes relating to clarification and formatting improvements, the deletion of Rule Four and Assessment Criteria Three relating to port-related activities, sorry, port-related industrial activities, introduce a new policy around the management of effects, changes to the planning maps to improve clarity for plan users, and the deletion of provisions relating to the Rockfall Hazard Zone. No pre-hearing meetings with submitters were held in relation to submissions on this chapter. Pre-circulated submitter evidence and statements were received from Kiwi Rail, Port of Napier, Ravenstown, Fuel Companies Limited, Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, Golden Bay and Fire and Emergency New Zealand. I have reviewed this evidence and note that Kiwi Rail, Port of Napier, Ravenstown and the Fuel Companies Limited have accepted the recommendations within the Section Forty-Two-A report. With respect to the evidence provided by Hawke's Bay Airport Limited, I note that they have proposed an additional assessment criterion which relates to the control of activities which may attract birds to minimise the potential for bird strike risk in relation to aviation activities at the airport. While the proposed criterion seems reasonable, as this has been proposed across a number of chapters within the PDP, I will provide a response to this matter within my officer's reply so that a consistent approach across the plan can be established. Similarly, fans have indicated that they are not satisfied with the recommendation made in response to their relief sought. Fans had requested a new performance standard in relation to firefighting water supply, and a consistent response across the planned chapters was to include an additional statement within the introduction of the chapter to refer plan users to the Engineering Code of Practice where consideration of firefighting water supply and storage is required. Given the breadth of this relief sought and concern across multiple PDP chapters, I will provide a response to this matter within my officer's reply to ensure consistency across the plan. The planning evidence received on behalf of Golden Bay has accepted all relevant recommendations within the Section Forty-Two-A report with the exception of requested amendments to Standard Two, height relation to boundary, and Assessment Criteria One. The specific relief sought by Golden Bay is to remove reference... Sorry. The specific relief sought for Standard Two by Golden Bay is to remove reference of the provision of height relation to boundary at any site boundary adjoining a road or designated rail corridor within Point Two of Standard Two, given that their own site is internal to the port and they are concerned that the reference to site boundary could be interpreted to include their site. Golden Bay requests an additional proviso within the standard to specifically note that it does not apply to sites located in the port zone that do not have direct access to legal road. I remain of the view that it is necessary to retain the wording in S Two Two to ensure that the correct application of height relation to boundary along the frontage with Breakwater Road, noting that the zone boundary extends beyond the common boundary of the port and the road, and the amenity of the road reserves should be considered to avoid a tunneling effect along this frontage. There may be merit, however, in providing the additional clarity sought within the exclusions at port at Standard Two. I will withhold my recommendation on this matter until we have heard from the submitter at the hearing. The panel raised three questions in relation to my Section Forty-Two-A recommendation report. These have been addressed in a separate document provided to the panel in advance of the hearing as requested. The key matters of contention relate to um, the inclusion of a provision to manage activities which may attract birds, um, the management of firefighting water supply and the wording of um, standard two, height relation to boundary. Thank you. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you. And you picked it up, but just to clarify for the record, you're referring to standard two, not standard three?
Yes, sorry, I did that the other day and I didn't actually note myself which ones I corrected, but there are a few, um, there were some incorrect references in there.
Okay. Thank you. I have no questions. Any questions? Any commissions?
Yes, you just say that you're gonna reserve your view on um, Golden Bay's amendment to standard two, once you hear from them, but they're tabling evidence, they're not appearing at the hearing, so you're not gonna hear anything more from them. So do you support the amendment that they seek at paragraph um, forty-two of the tabled evidence? Uh, yes or no?
Sorry, I'll just have to um, pull up the evidence.
Yeah.
Forty-two, did you say?
Yep.
Um. Yes, I am supportive of that amendment.
No, that's very helpful. Thank you. Right, thank you. Um, I've been knowing further questions from the panel. I think that's the close of the opening statements on the reporting offices. So thank you very much for your um, input there. Um, we are running slightly late, so I welcome to the table, do I? Um, Ms. Denby and Ms. McDonald, is that correct?
Okay.
And we do have your presentation in front of us. Uh, we may not have it on that screen yet at the moment, but we do have it on our laptops, so we can follow you through there if we need.
Good morning, everyone. Nice to be here. Uh, this has been a long, complicated process since we put the submission in in twenty-twenty-three with further opportunities for submission and changes and government changes and all the things that have come on board. So we do our best to try to uh, understand it all and um, put forward our um, support for the environment which does not have its own voice.
Good, for the benefit of an out-of-town now on the panel, could you just um, explain to me the sort of the history behind the um, society? When it was formed and for what?
Yes, uh, the Ahuriri Estuary Protection Society was formed in nineteen eighty-one when Napier City Council and others were proposing a marina in the Pandora West Shore area. And the society has, they thought that was just gonna be a one-issue thing for them, but of course, development has gone on ever since around the estuary. And particularly now, it feels like it's another turning point for the estuary with all the developments on the table at the moment, on all sides, except for the cliffs at the back, as far as I know. There's always a lot that little groups like ours don't know about what's going on. So um, I'm Angie Denby, the Chair of the Ahuriri Estuary Protection Society, and this is Sue McDonald, who is the Secretary. And she has been with the organisation since the beginning. So some of these pictures in our presentation will be familiar to some of the people here today and others are new. So the first thing we'd like to remember and remind people is uh, all the special titles that the estuary itself has in the many plans, documents available to everybody at a local and a national and, and international level in some ways. And estaries of this particular type and value are rare in this lower North Island. So what lives there? Uh, seventy-seven species of birds of all kinds, ones that are found only in New Zealand and as we know that the population of native birds, most of them, nearly all of them are in decline. Uh, endemic native migratory that come from the other side of the world every year and introduced birds. Another very important aspect is the fish, and this is a nursery, breeding ground, feeding ground for fish that end up in the ocean and are an important factor in the commercial activities of fisheries. And then of course, everything that lives in the mud of, is the food for the birds and uh, fish. So the example I've chosen to focus on briefly is the bar-tailed godwit, kuaaka. And even in locally, they're considered iconic and they're featured in statues um, at the airport and at the Watchman Road roundabout. And approximately three hundred make Hawke's Bay their home every year. In other parts of the country, there are more, thousands up in Miranda and the Thames area. So another important aspect of the uh, kuaaka is an area called the Scrapes, which belongs to Napier City Council and is part of the wildlife, West Shore Wildlife Reserve, just at the side of the estuary channel. It's called the Scrapes. It was created especially for the roost, the wading birds at high tide, where they all leave the uh, feeding ground and roost, rest until the next low tide reveals their food again. The East Asian Australasian flyway, it's a fascinating thing. Here's the globe and here is the path of the godwits. So they start in Alaska, fly non-stop eight or nine days, wings beating the whole way, all the way to New Zealand. Uh, the juveniles at fourteen weeks old, they fly together as a group, come here also. They stay here for our summer to eat while it's frozen and too cold in Alaska and then they fly back in the autumn, firstly to the Yellow Sea in Chi- between China and Korea for six weeks feeding and then on to Alaska for the burst of insects uh, ready for them to start their breeding. Back to the estuary. Ongoing issues perennial, we talk about them every time. Just look at the headings and these are things that are happening constantly in the, in the estuary that affects the water and the ecosystems. So on to our part in the district plan process, stormwater. So we've got two sections there, the Ahuriri Regional Park, and this was to be the saving grace for cleaning up the water into the estuary. So things we've heard, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the floodwater retention plan, uh, the, it's now considered not a suitable site for that. Uh, the, it's, there's too much difficulty getting water across the motorway for at least half of the urban and, and industrial stormwater into the area for polishing. So that's another disappointment. So we question, is the regional park achieving its original intention? Which of course was flood retention, cleaning the water and passive recreation. We've been attending the joint committee meetings and from what we've seen recently, the focus is on commerce, entertainment and hospitality. So that's a bit unsettling for us. So we want genuine improvement in water quality entering the estuary, a standard, a method and a way of measuring that standard. Stormwater network. Of course, all the new development and housing going up and around, around town is going to create further impermeable surfaces and stress the current stressed stormwater system. We would really like to know that sewage eventually will not be released into the estuary at times of high rainfall. And for the three-year monitoring, three-year-plus monitoring that's been going on in the urban waterways, we're really keen to see treatment happening at the source of difficult areas, the highest pollution, before it enters into whatever system is coming for further cleaning. Airport zone. So we understand the airport wishes to uh, extend their business area right down to the edge of the estuary. That's the southern boundary of the, of the estuary. Um, we know there are small little wetlands right there next to the uh, stock bank. We're concerned about all the things that a development right to the edge will bring and they're listed there. The other proposed development that we hear about but are yet to see any spot on a map where that's going to be placed is the solar farm and um, we've given reference there to overseas uh, research about the dangers for migratory birds with solar farms. Think their water, land on them. Uh, what was I going to say there? Yes, the, the latest thing we've seen is now the airport wishes to work with the um, people on Ahuriri Station, which we understand most probably will become an Ahuriri trust's land uh, to do the solar farm. So we know the godwits arrive across that northern part of the estu- of the estuary, up near the hills there. They sort of recover themselves there and then move on down to the feeding grounds. So, next section, Sue's going to speak.
If you could just indulge me for a moment, I'm hearing impaired and sometimes when I attend these meetings, people seem, say that I yell too much, so I do apologize. I'm not yelling, I just have a loud voice. Anyway, um, I want to talk about the Ahuriri's um, stormwater zone. As part of this protest, this process, the society submitted a further submission opposing requests from the Napier City Council Commercial Director for consideration of rezoning part of the stormwater zone at the proposed Ahuriri Regional Park to mixed use. Our concern is that if this request is approved and signed off in this district plan, which I understand is due mid-year, this year, the designation could remain for the life of this plan, which I believe is twenty years. If for any reason the Ahuriri Regional Park does not proceed, the changing zoning may stay. It is my experience that when a zoning is changed, it's very difficult to reverse. This opens up the possibility of a mixed-use zone, a very broad concept, could again put undesirable pressure on the Ahuriri estuary and surrounds, as we, as we have outlined in our presentation, the relief sought is that no rezoning be considered at this time.
Thanks, Sue. So on to our final submission topic, AESZ, the ecology in stormwater zone. We've mentioned there our concerns. So recreation activities planned at the Ahuriri Regional Park bring, being brought right to the edge, edge of the estuary and sensitive wildlife zones up in that northern part. Uh, we'd like to see the Department of Conservation having a greater presence at all stages of the planning. We know they're part of the tag team, but is that enough? With, with our knowledge and experience of the birds and the wildlife and um, the contacts we have with Birds New Zealand, et cetera, we'd like to be able to give feedback to the planners before plans are set in concrete for the regional parks, entertainment, tourists, et cetera, et cetera, aspects. So the estuary needs guaranteed protection from pollution created by all development that's gonna go ahead. The wetlands need to bring the water quality above the recommended minimum requirements. And as I mentioned before, the three-plus years of monitoring needs to have greater, quicker action on treating the hotspots of pollution. So to me, this is, this, a page of impending threats is really what's on our mind the most. And if you look at the photo on the top right-hand corner, you'll see a, a truck going across the current expressway. And directly in front of it is the Scrapes area, which is where the godwits and other wading birds roost at high tide. So the fast-track expressway proposal is to add two lanes into the Scrapes. We don't know how that will affect the godwits, whether they'll stay in the area or not, so there's huge concerns about that. Uh, the land will take, the extension will take land from the Scrapes and the wildlife reserve there. Also, that extension will further restrict the water flow to the upper estuary as it already did. And if you look in the lower right-hand photo, that is the current expressway going directly across the estuary from one side to the other. When you travel across it, you don't know that it's sitting on a causeway. So the red area is the filled-in area across the estuary and the green bit is a little bit of a bridge on the right-hand so, side that lets the water flow through a bit more readily. Throughout the red area there, there are three concrete culverts going through for the tide. So two more lanes added to that's going to make longer, narrower culverts and more difficult water flow. And on the left, a picture of a solar farm. Uh, we understand the airport um, commercial proposal for income for themselves is a very large solar farm. So that is another concern. So in final, our final words, please advocate for and give priority to the estuary. Don't keep chipping away at it and giving it more stress. Um, all those plans below there are ones in front of you that you are involved in. So please put the most stringent rules in place for the welfare of the estuary. And these special places must be protected. We're part of nature, we depend on it for our lives, even though we don't think about that very often. Uh, thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Um, could you just clarify for me that the, the relationship between the, the regional park and this zone? In terms sp- spatially, what the relationship is between the Ahuriri Regional Park and this particular zone?
Um, the zone, well, all the estuary is part of this zone, is my understanding. And the regional park goes right up to its border on the southern side. Am I correct?
I'll find that out. Is there some clarification from the reporting officer?
Um, yes, I'd be happy to answer that. Um, so the zone covers what is now currently called the Lagoon Farm, which is um, council-owned farm and the zone will, will cover that entire um, farm. Um, and so the regional park is related to that site.
Right, okay.
So it's the entirety of that zone.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds like I misunderstood.
That's right. And I understand some master planning has been done for the park, regional park. Is the society involved with that process?
Not as far as I know. We go along to the joint committee plans to listen.
Right.
Um, and sometimes they let us say things, but we're not officially involved in any planning.
Is there any clarification on that? Some point to be made?
So I'm no longer heavily involved in it as I was previously, but my understanding is that the society is an important stakeholder through the process.
Can you talk up, please? I can't hear you.
Yeah, it's the machine. Yeah, it is. Um, my understanding is that the society is an important stakeholder through the process and that there will be opportunities through the process um, to um, I guess, get uh, the information that the society ha- holds, uh, because they are, I guess, experts from the field.
Hmm.
But also um, in terms of the proposals that are put forward, there'll be opportunities for um, for engagement.
Okay, thank you. Um, just, just another question, uh, before I turn to Commissioner Van Voorthausen. Um, what, for this zone, what would be the ideal uh, controls of its use? What would you like to see the outcomes um, that this zone encourages? Do you summarize?
Prioritizing water quality. Prioritising water quality into the estuary, of course, that, that's our main interest. Um, in the past, a bird hide was built on the stock bank on the side that this zone is. Uh, at the time, our chairperson asked that it be below the stock bank so as not to disturb the bird life on the other side. That was accepted and so the, the bird hide just looks over the top of the estuary. It isn't hugely visible. Um, we see in the new plans, three large towers right up on the edge against the uh Estry Channel. So number one, that's a big concern to us. So those kind of things, we want the opportunity to speak to. And even um a proposed bridge going back across the estuary. We already worked with the council not to get cycles and people and dogs up on that other side of the estuary because of the sensitive habitats further up. And that was accepted at the time, so I don't know what's changed, allowing those things to happen this time round.
Okay, thank you for that and thank you for the presentation. Any questions?
Yeah, just to follow up, sorry to clar- try and clarify my mind where the regional park boundary is. So my understanding is from what you've said and what I've read is that the regional park includes the AESZ zone to the south of the estuary proper, but it doesn't include the natural open space zone that resides over the estuary. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, it's correct, from my understanding.
Okay, and it doesn't involve um the area of Lagoon Farm or the Ahuriri Station to the north of the estuary proper, which is zoned, uh, rural production, doesn't include that?
Correct.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Thank you. Any further questions? Thank you very much for your um time and effort and um I for one have, have learnt a lot from your presentation, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you, ladies.
Okay, we will take a break for morning tea. Uh, just, just check the schedule. Yes, we are due to resume at ten fifty, so ten to eleven. Um, and until the meantime, uh, the hearing is um adjourned, so thank you very much.